I'm going to call the meeting to order for the Iowa City City Conference Board Agenda. Roll call, please.
Iowa City Council members present, Burgess.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Sully.
Yes.
Taylor.
Here.
Teague.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Weiner.
Here.
Johnson County Supervisor Lisa Green Douglas.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Porter.
Reddick.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
And Iowa City Board of Education Eastham, Malone, and Wrestler. They obviously don't have a vote. We do have a quorum though, so.
All right, well, great. Welcome, everybody, to the Conference Board Meeting and Agenda. We are going to go to item number C, which is a motion to approve the minutes of February 19th, 2019, Conference Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D, this is the fiscal year 2021 budget. The purpose of this meeting is to set a public hearing for the Iowa City Assessors' proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. And I know, Brad, you're going to kind of give us some updates there.
I'll go over it real quick. Most of our budget every year is, 80% of it is related to personnel, so as you can expect, that's what most of the changes are this year. A few of the highlights in salaries, we budgeted 2.25% for an annual increase, similar to what the county was using. I got that number from the county HR. And then we've got various merit percentage increases among the staff. Corresponding to that, direct increases in FICA and IPRs, and then almost an 8% increase in health insurance. The other, every other year, we have either a big increase or a big decrease in postage and printing. Fiscal year 21 will be a reassessment year, so we've increased it to reflect that we'll be mailing assessment notices to everybody. That's, as far as the budget goes, and then also a $3,000 annual amount that we add to our reserve auto fund. So that's really all there is for the actual budget. I should point out also, I don't know if you noticed, on the budget that I shared at the bottom of that, it shows an increase in the amount to be raised by taxation. A year ago, we had an empty position in our office, and that allowed us last year to have a pretty low levy rate, and I asked for not very, it was a pretty sizable decrease in the amount of taxation to fund our office. In hindsight, after talking with some county finance, maybe I should have spread that out, because now my levy rate is going on the other direction. If you average them out, it'd still be a really good levy rate. And actually, it's just on the high end for our office over the last few years. Last year's levy rate was the lowest that I could find on record for our office, and this year it's going to be a little different. But in the future, if I had that happen again, I think I'd try to stabilize it a little more.
Thanks for that explanation, because I was wondering. And so that's why you had that large unassigned balance from the previous year, was because we'd budgeted for that position, but it wasn't filled?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Other than that, I guess I'd like to thank my evaluation committee, Mayor Bruce, Lisa Green Douglas, and Charlie Eastham from School Board. We met on January 6th and were able to talk about our office performance, and I think that went well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Brad, this is about salaries. So you use the county's evaluation tool for your staff that gets to merit, right?
Yes.
So they would get, like, our non-bargaining at the county, the 2.25, and then whatever merit they earned. What do you do for yourself and your deputy?
I use the same merit scale for the deputy, but for my, we have two deputies, actually. For myself, I just put a number out there. I fill out that self-evaluation, and then I take it to my committee evaluation, and we go over all the answers that I put in. But yeah, that number isn't necessarily developed from the merit.
Sure. So did the committee, then, Lisa, come up with a recommendation?
We accepted.
Okay. I just, we just came from the county assessor board, and based on 2.25, you guys would, you would be losing ground. So I'll hold this until we talk about that evaluation then. Thanks.
Anyone else want to make comments about the budget?
One, Janelle. So you saw, for my salary, I have been at 3.75.
Okay.
After the, okay.
Perfect. Thanks.
I'm supportive of the budget as presented.
And is there any one that is, I know that Supervisor Lisa Green Douglas and I were a part of the evaluation. I don't know if there's any desire for anyone to go into closed session, or executive session, to discuss the budget, or anything related to employment? No? Okay, all right. We just, all right, so would someone like to make a motion to accept the budget? I just heard Susan Mims.
Move.
Yeah, second.
Does?
No, it'd have to be second by something else.
Second.
Oh.
Oh, that's right.
Yes, yes.
And authorized publication.
Publication, yep.
Yes. So this motion is to approve publication of the proposed budget. Moved by Sully, seconded by Sullivan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, so moving on to item number E. There's a motion, I need a motion to set a date for public hearing, and the suggested date at this point is February 18th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Hayden, seconded by Mims. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number F, this is present Board of Review applications. I believe we have one.
Your packet, there's just one applicant for Board of Review. It's Ryan O'Leary. He's a Realtor in town. He also has, owns property. He's involved in a number of things. I think he'd probably be a good addition to the Board of Review.
Move the appointment of Ryan O'Leary.
Second. Moved by Sullivan, seconded by Thomas. All in favor say aye for the appointment of Board of Review member Ryan O'Leary.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, so this is a time for Board comments.
I'll just make one comment. I'd asked Brad this before the meeting, and so I'll just make it, let everybody know. I had just asked about whether the Iowa City Conference Board is audited on an annual, every other year basis.
Assessors' office.
Assessors' office, I'm sorry. And we didn't, Rod and I and Brad were talking and didn't really have an answer, so they're going to check with the county and see if they're being audited through the county, and if not, just see if there's anything that we need to do in that regard.
I'll report back on that at our next meeting.
Thank you.
We're discussing that we think you'd have to be, because we're your fiscal agent and everything's audited.
That's kind of what Rod thought, and we were just, they were just going to check, for sure.
Any other comments? All right, moving on to Agenda Number I, and that is adjournment. Do I have a motion? All right, we have moved by.
Me.
Second.
All right, Sully, seconded by.
Rod.
Sullivan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Wow.
That's what's.
Good work, Bruce.
All right.
Bruce, should have been harder on you. That's ridiculous. Throwing us out that quick.
Yes, oh, yeah.
You can do that with a typical Iowa City meeting.
Uh-oh. Don't put that pressure on me. All right.
Have a good night, everyone.
Yes, have a good night.
Bye.
I'm going to go ahead and invite HCDC up.
I don't know how many of them.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yeah.
Are there?
Yeah.
Hi, everyone.
Isn't there like five, I mean, just the commissioners?
Yes.
Yes.
One, two, three.
Six quarters.
At least, I know three.
Yeah.
Can I just give?
I assume that you see the numbers, you're going to invite them around.
Sure.
Stay down.
Okay, awesome.
Are we percolating prepared to give you an overview of the agency, if you want some background?
Sure.
If you don't, you're going to have to head to the discussion.
Okay, okay, awesome. I'm going to go ahead and invite HCDC Commissioners up to join Let's see, yeah, we have enough. Yep, I see six. Here's a minimum, so, yeah. Three, six, yeah. That's six. Yep, so we should be good.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there is one over there.
All right, so we are transitioning into our Iowa City City Council Work Session for Tuesday, January 21st, 2020, here at City Hall. And we have just invited HCDC up here to join in the first item that we're going to discuss, and this is the joint meeting with them in relation to the discussion for funding for the aid-to-agency grant program. I'm going to invite Kirk up here and maybe give us a little background from staff perspective.
So Kirk Lehman, Community Development Planner, I staff the HCDC. I just wanted to go briefly over the background about how we ended up where we are today, so with some initial changes, the second round of changes, and then today's request. So in July 2018, council adopted changes to the aid-to-agencies process, where prior it had been one funding round that would occur from August through July when they would receive funding. That recommendation split aid-to-agencies into two sets of funds, so legacy agencies were those who had received funding in the past five years, and then emerging agencies were everybody else, with most funds going to those legacy agencies then. In January of 2019, then, as that first set of recommendations was going through its first funding round, HCDC was considering the legacy aid-to-agency allocation. At that point in time, HCDC had a budget request, or a budget estimate of $355,000, and HCDC decided to make a recommendation for full funding of requests for legacy agencies, which was $625,500. They requested a joint meeting with council to discuss, and in February, they had a joint meeting on February 5th, and council recommended approval of that as a one-time allocation, with the understanding that HCDC would again revisit that aid-to-agencies process to see if there's a way to avoid those last-minute budget requests again. So HCDC went through another funding process evaluation from April to June, and in July made a new recommendation, and that is what you find in your agenda packet up there. So with that, legacy agencies was no longer those who had received funding in the last five years, but instead got incorporated into the city steps funding, or the city steps plan, which is the consolidated plan that is updated every five years, and that is also reviewed annually. So it gives an opportunity for new agencies to potentially come in, but it also adds some consistency, because it's a formal process for determining what are legacy agencies. So council approved that in September, and during that time, city staff plus the city council, or city manager's office and HCDC representatives, as well as agencies, all met to discuss what budgets might look like in the future. And the Agency Impact Coalition, which is the Coalition of Legacy Agencies, came up with a request of $500,068 and $400 as a budget estimate. December, this last meeting for HCDC, December 19th, the Agency Impact Coalition again came back and noted they would really like to maintain those current funding levels, because they had seen increased need, which I imagine HCDC will be talking about. And so they came back with a request of $675,000, and that led to this request in this meeting, once council accepted the request. So in terms of moving forward, then, after this meeting, HCDC will make its budget recommendation on January 23rd. So right now, staff has estimated $435,000 based on the proposed budget that is currently out there. So that would be for legacy agencies in addition to $23,000 for emerging agencies. So that would be 458,000 total in aid-to-agencies. And HCDC has received 660,300 in aid-to-agency requests from legacy agencies. So I can throw out more numbers at you, but most of those should be in here. Again, it's in your packet. But if you do have questions, just wanted to give you a brief background on that.
Thank you, Kirk. And so for the purpose of councilors here, we're very happy that HCDC has made this recommendation. And for those out in the community that don't know what HCDC means, it means the Housing and Community Development Commission. And so we wanted to definitely welcome all of you for being here today. Because all of us don't know you, I know each of you, but I would like just to go around and just say your name for all the councilors.
John.
Please repeat, please.
John McKinstry.
Megan Alter.
Matt Drebek.
Vee Fixmo Rice, the Chair.
Peggy Aguilar.
Maria Padron.
Thank you all for coming and being a part today. So what I'm thinking is, we might start with if HCDC would like to share with us, and then after that, we'll have some council discussion. And councilors, feel free to jump in and seek any clarification that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, and thank you, councilmembers, for agreeing to have this joint session. It's interesting to note that it was almost a year ago that we were here last time, and it's obviously a little bit different makeup, but we're very excited to be continuing this conversation with you. I think that, you know, I really commend the agencies in our community and my fellow commissioners for really trying to create a fair, transparent process for people applying, for organizations, agencies to apply for this funding. And I think that we've really tried to put together a process that works well, and I'm really heartened by the fact that we've had conversations with city staff, with the city manager's office. So I just kind of wanted to say thank you to everybody for putting so much time and energy into this. And I think really tonight, there's a couple reasons why we thought it might be good to just continue this conversation. One is, and this is kind of overall, is to really shift our understanding of the work that our human resources nonprofits perform, and that it's not necessarily charity, it's really an investment. And I think for Housing and Community Development Commission, every year we get funding requests that are, that far exceed, and historically have far exceeded what we've been able to provide. And I think that that's why last year you saw this real change. And there are reasons for that. You know, just to kind of recap some of the data that we had had last time we had convened, you know, the local population has grown 11% from 2010 to 2017. We've had increased costs of living, more than 14% inflation from 2010 to 2018. And the number of people served by the agencies has increased, and funding has remained flat or actually decreased. With increased demand, agencies have really needed to increase their staffing and their supplies. And we've seen this, actually, agencies coming forth and saying that they're at risk of losing federal funds because they can't get their matching funds. And that's a real concern for us. And really, when I say investment, I mean, I think that what I'm trying to get at is, you know, the services that our nonprofits provide, the city cannot provide, right, but they really are providing benefits that have costs that like trickle out throughout our entire community. And so it's the human cost, but it's literally the amount of funds that they can generate, and the projects that they do, and the people that they serve. That type of investment, I think, is something that we should really be looking at. And I say that as though they are vendors. They're providing services to our community that I don't think anybody else can really provide. So I think it's sort of important to kind of frame it in that regard. And then I kind of had two sort of goals, a short term and a long term. One would be to create a starting point for funding agencies that accurately reflects the public needs being served by those agencies. So the starting point that we had, you know, it was like 300 at Kirk, it was, you know, it was pretty abysmal, and it had been flat and line for a really long time, for over a decade, which is before we came last year. And we had, I think what we're seeing is that we need a new starting point that actually reflects what is going on in our community. And I think that it was somewhat of a surprise to city councilors last time, because nobody had really presented data. And that's kind of what we're hoping to continue the discussion about today. And so then our recommendation is that that starting point be 675, moving forward, $675,000. And then second is a long-term plan, and I really would like to encourage another conversation that is to start planning for a sustainable investment resource outside of aid-to-agency. So our recommendation, or my recommendation, would be that we collaborate with city staff to outline a pathway forward to launch a local option sales tax venture. And I think that there's a lot of opportunity, that's one idea, but I think that there's a real desire to push this a little bit further, that the community that we are a part of is really strong and vibrant when we look at like our volunteerism, when we look about and see the diversity and the strength that we have, these seven goals, our social justice, our racial equity, all of these elements, I think that we can rally around our nonprofits who serve our community and create a local option sales tax venture that would be successful. And so to keep those local nonprofits in that calculation for that. And so I really would welcome a conversation and a plan to move forward, because I think that we need that long-term, that long-term vision, that long-term venture, whatever that may be. There've been a couple of those discussed, utility tax, local option sales tax was the one that I think has gained a little bit more traction. So anyway, those are kind of the opportunities that we have discussed with the Agency Impact Coalition and with city staff over this last year. So those are kind of the two things I was hoping that we could discuss a little bit further. And then I would also like to introduce our aid-to-agency, or our Agency Impact Coalition, too many agencies. Agency Impact Coalition actually put together a presentation to sort of introduce themselves, and I think that they have some really interesting and compelling information that, as HCDC, you know, it's really their story to tell. So if it's okay with you, I think that they would like to show their presentation.
Sure. Do we have staff that can help set up the computer?
Hi, good evening. My name is Nikki Ross. I am co-chair of the Agency Impact Coalition. We convened for the first time last February, and we have 17 of 22 agencies who receive A2A funding are part of our coalition. I'll let you introduce yourself, too.
I'm Chrissy King-Ganelli, Executive Director, and Shelterhouse is a member of the Agency Impact Coalition.
Before we begin, so I know how quickly to move, how much time would you like to give us for this part?
How much time do you, would you like?
I will keep it snappy, and you can ask questions if I go over things too quickly. How about that?
Great, thank you.
Okay. So really, we will reiterate what it is that Vee said. We are asking for an investment in our collective community impact. We want to talk a little bit about that today. Something that might have been missing from the process, a prior process, and the determination of what funding should be for our social services in our community is really the conversation about what is that scope, and how are we working together to provide this much-needed service to our community and enrich the lives of people. We don't talk about that often enough, in my opinion, and in an opinion of AIC. So let's start with talking about, ooh, I'm going the wrong direction, the continuum, the continuum of care. The idea that we have funded organizations as a, okay, we're going to put some funds here to healthcare, to education, to employment. We want to make sure everybody understands. And the reason we convene together is to tell our story together, this is a continuum of care. Every piece works together. All these organizations work together to provide a framework and a safety net for folks in our community who are vulnerable. We cannot do it on our own as a single organization. The city cannot do it on their own. We have to combine that together. That collective impact has substantial economic multipliers and a significant public benefit that positively impacts our community. I'm going to go through some of these pretty quickly, but I'm going to ask also Chrissy to help me. We have several points about actual cost impact to our community for some of the work that we're doing collectively. I tried to identify where the information came from at the end here. So we know that the winter shelter decreased vagrancy calls by as much as 74%. That's a decrease in public safety costs. In terms of healthcare, we're sending folks to the appropriate level of care when they get support from the free medical and dental clinic. And then, you know, improvements in housing are also contributing to those decreased healthcare, hospitalization, emergency room, and even incarceration costs. The other two areas that we chose to identify tonight, just know this is, there's so many more, we tried to like sum it up. It's just that improved employability. So the youth organizations in our community who are part of this are building mentoring relationships that have enabled 55% of the student mentees to stay in high school. 100% of everyone in the youth transitional living program as part of UAY has obtained or maintained employment. I mean, not just providing housing, but actual economic contribution is provided. Childcare, I think you can, I mean, that's a clear connection. And then the other piece, the last piece we wanted to talk about, was how our organizations are actually capturing extremely valuable resources that would not be captured by anybody else. So first of all, we're organizing, we're utilizing local funds to leverage state and federal funding. It's really important to know that as local funding decreases, we are at a huge risk of losing federal and state dollars if we cannot keep up. For the free medical and dental clinic, 1.6 million of in-kind expert medical services are provided to people. That's how we can keep that cost low. That's how we can provide appropriate care that doesn't involve going to the emergency room. Table to table, we, just for what we bring to Iowa City, is four and a half million dollars worth of food that would go into the landfill. And we're getting it to people who need it. Food pantries, meal sites, and meal delivery services are bridging that meal gap for a fraction of the cost of retail food. And wherever possible, all of our agencies are utilizing volunteers to provide basic services. That's a quick summary of that. So let's move into what funding has looked like. The Iowa Policy Project folks put together an assessment for us to understand how funding has kept up over time. And what they discovered is that when you take into account inflation, aid-to-agency funding has decreased by 17%. If aid-to-agency funding is meant to provide a stable source, something that we can rely on to continue the level of our services, that's been a challenge, and it's not sticking up there with us. And so we have a few examples. It's a lot of information. It has been provided to you. It has been provided to you. I will ask Chrissy to help me with some of the different items, but I'm just going to call to your attention. We've gotten six organizations to provide some very specific examples. A lot of what we've talked about is broad, but here are some specific organizations. So the free medical and dental clinic, they did receive an increase in funding, but take a look at, doubled their weekly clinics and increased, you know, shifted their focus from drop-in urgent care to more comprehensive health services. I'm going to let Chrissy take over for me.
So to pick off where Nikki left, is, what we tried to do is take a snapshot of several different organizations and share with you, given the level of funding in 2010, so if you look at that blue-ish text box there, given the level in 2010 compared to FY 2019 funding, to look at that in comparison to how our service needs or service costs based on either activity level, service of units of service, how those have changed in comparison with the level of funding received from aid to agencies. In every way, it's not kept stride. We've really struggled with trying to communicate different metrics that would speak in a consistent way for the council, but at the same time, we also want to, as we're sharing this information, add to the conversation that this is based on a gross assumption, which is that in the first case, that FY 2010 funding was a relevant starting off place to even begin the conversation. And I would say without exception, across the coalition, we agree that it is not. So free medical clinic, in indicating the numbers of individuals that they're seeing and the services, they've increased their weekly medical clinics by 30%, doubled the number of weekly dental clinics, talking about the scope of services, so more comprehensive care, and shifting from acute to chronic care. All of these things are much longer conversations, but we're trying to truncate the information to make it something that can be metabolized in a short period of time in this evening's conversation. So 37% increase in costs required to support the increases in the number of scope of services. And then if we go back into that text box, it costs $317,000 per year to serve Iowa City residents in the free medical and dental clinic, and they're leveraging so much more. And then briefly, just some high-level kind of impacts and costs to the community, you can see there in the bottom, and I don't want to continue to read everything for everyone. But any questions on that? And if there are, I'd ask Barbara to speak to that.
I knew Chrissy could help summarize what we were trying to get at, so thank you for that. And I'm just going to go through really quickly. I do encourage you to read these more closely. I think what they do is paint a picture for us of how every individual service has grown in its own way to meet a changing scope of need in the last 10 years, and then how that reduction of funding is ultimately impacting these organizations and our community. So UAY expanded programming. Their funding has decreased by 54% in the last 10 years. They've adjusted the scope and direction of services while having minimal budget increases. That's, you know, that's an incredible feat, but then to continue to do that with 54% less funding. Community has offered a 48% increase in their number of assists, doubled the amount of food per visit. So folks, when we're talking about people visiting a food pantry, it really matters how much people are walking away with, like how long they can be fed by these programs. And a doubling of the amount of food per visit certainly makes an impact there. This is correlated with, this one's an interesting one because to talk about why we should maintain the level of funding, this year with that increase in funding that was offered by the city, community was able to support an 8% increase in the number of people served and do a Saturday pantry. So these are real impacts. Shelterhouse, I'll let you speak to this.
Sure, thanks. So one thing that I'd use us as an exemplar of is that initially, aid to agencies funding supported emergency shelter services. Again, the amount that we were initially awarded, based on not necessarily relevantly need, as I was told, and I'll be candid in this, going more than 15 to 20 years back, where you were funded at was based on, and I quote, from past city staff and past council members that I advocated with, again, no one here today was a part of those conversations, but it depended on who you knew within the staff and the council and when you came into the process. Not very data-informed. So just based on the changing, just alone on the nights of shelter, 148% increase in the nights of shelter. But over time, and if we just look at FY 10 as a starting point, we've radically changed the service offerings through Shelterhouse, and we're not unique. Other agencies have done the same work. So the work that we're doing is more sophisticated, it's more expansive, not based on us driving that, but on the community need. And there are macro issues that we're responding to that we don't have control over. So programs such as rapid rehousing, permanent supportive housing, which are allowing us to not just manage homelessness, but end it and make real impacts in our community that have public benefit. These things are not even consideration in the current funding levels and are technically, if we wanted to be restrictive in how we talked about that, not literally supported at the current levels. Again, using us as an example, that we're not unique, there are other, the same stories across these different agencies. Is that helpful?
And I do want to make sure that we'll have more time for council to discuss with the commissioners, so.
That's why I asked.
All right, thank you.
So you'll note two additional examples. It's a similar story, but we all are doing things, expanding services, or Big Brothers and Big Sister has a waiting list. That's one thing we haven't talked about yet. What happens when you are not funded? You do not grow to meet the need, and you have a really big waiting list, and that's fewer folks who can benefit from these services. And so I'm going to have Chrissy speak to this last slide.
So our focus here in our message is that we amplify and exponentiate the work of the city, your work, and we can't do that without your support. This is a collaboration. In moving forward, we have essentially three asks. And it's to work together in collaboration to, number one, approve, we recommend, to approve the current funding recommendation from Housing Community Development Commission. Help us move the needle forward on this foundational starting point. Continue funding at this level. It's the minimum needed to maintain our sustainability, our consistency, and our continuity in care. To build, strengthen our continuum of care by increasing the investment in our operating capacity and our capital needs. And three, to commit. Commit to establishing new and increased financial resources, invest in our collective community impact. We hope to do this in partnership with you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that's the impact, the Agency Impact Coalition member. So really appreciate you all coming out and having a video to share with council and the commissioners today. All right, so we'll kind of open it up to councilors and commissioners to have a discussion.
I would like to say a few things from the last time that we met, and is that these agencies combined provide, have a full-time equivalent of more than 500 employees, and they bring to our community $36 million from other sources of funding, and also they provide benefits like retirement and healthcare and things like that to their employees.
One question I would have is on the, how is your funding from private donations, the aid agents, the agencies, how is their funding trending? Is it increasing as well or decreasing?
I am not aware of their private funding, like resources, revenues, and I'm certain it's probably different according to.
Probably different, but yeah, in terms of, is it trending, is it flat as well or is it increasing? Any one that would speak to that?
Yeah, maybe one of the agencies can speak to it, please.
Stu Mullins from UAY. Ours has gone up. That's one of the, they touched on that we've had a, you know, we've halved our amount in the last 10 years, and that's how we've tried to keep up. And yeah, our fundraising has been aggressive. We've worked really hard at it, and it has gone up a lot. I think in the last year or so, it's gone up 150%, something like that. So that's how we're trying to meet our gaps.
I will comment on that, too, is, you know, it also depends on your capacity, right? So how much capacity do you have with staffing to commit to fundraising? And I think that certain agencies probably are at a disadvantage or a steep learning curve with that, you know, so it's sort of a circular kind of.
It is, and we, I mean, I'll just, I'll make one last comment. I mean, we, that was a, by design, the board and I and our management team, we wanted to go after it aggressively and put somebody in that role, A, to fill that gap where we were losing money, but also to have the community better understand our value. That was a big piece of it, was just we needed to do a better job of raising money, but a better job of showing why we're important, so.
I would just comment that I think your presentation this evening where you did show the kind of the collective impact addresses to some degree the fact that each agency's capacity to fundraise is different. So it seems to me that the collective concept, both better portrays the fullness of what it is that's being provided as well as could help with the fundraising component that would go along with it.
I just want to ask you, remind me, what's the original amount we have the city allocated for?
Before last.
For the increase, yeah.
Before the increase? I can't remember. It was something like 350, 355 or something?
And when is the.
378.
700 for a couple of years.
Yeah.
It was how much?
378, 700 for a couple of years.
Okay, when the last time we increased it?
Last year.
Over 10 years ago.
Before.
It's 10 years ago, like 2010?
No.
Good evening, Jeff Fruin, City Manager. We've really looked back from fiscal year 10. It's been pretty steady. It's gone up a little some years, gone down a little some years, both in the general fund contributions and in the CDBG contributions. Staff looks at it a little bit more holistically and looks at all of the support that we're providing to agencies, not just legacy agencies or emerging agencies. So some of you may recall, when this came up last year, we laid out, while the grant program has stayed fairly stable since 2010, that funding level, the city has certainly picked up funding for a number of other causes, winter shelter, behavioral access center, things of that nature, even the 1105 project we financially contributed to. And of course, you're very familiar with what we've done in the affordable housing area. So when I look at aid to agencies, I don't look at it as a grant program. I look at it as more of a holistic approach to how the city is funding some of these community needs. And if you look at it that way, our support has grown tremendously since that time. However, the grant program itself has stayed very flat. What was proposed to you in the fiscal year 21 budget is roughly about a 25% increase over that historical flat level. But again, that changes from year to year. That 25% increase was meant to reset the base, if you will. That was the conversation we had with the council in August about resetting that base. So we looked at factors like the CPI, like a 2% inflation factor, the growth of our taxable base, and ultimately, our recommendation was that 25% roughly increase.
I also may add, too, that the aid to agencies is a little bit different because it's somewhat unrestricted. So some of the other grant programs, you know, this is different because it can be applied to salaries and things like that. Just to show you that there's some nuance there, and I think that's why agencies have really sort of come together around this issue because it's different than other grant programs. But it is, you know, true, what Jeff has said, and has been, we've been talking about that in our discussions. It's just that this pot is different in that sense. As you can imagine, nonprofit, it can be very vital.
I would just add to that, when looking at individual fundraising, that many times going outside of these funds, they are restricted. And so, and they might be small dollar, you know, a couple of thousand dollars is not small, and yet, if you're looking to be able to grow for those goals and those needs, that's an awful lot of grants that are having to be put together, and there's a limited number of dollars in the private sector for that as well. So I just wanted to mention that, that at the same time that there've been a lot of fundraising efforts, they can't go for some of the things that are desperately needed in terms of operational needs.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, from a policy standpoint, I think one thing that would be helpful for me to understand from the current council is really where we see ourselves in terms of this framing as kind of the core governmental services and talking about investment in the community. I think Chrissy, you know, tried to really talk about impact in terms of data, right? We want to have data-driven information and understand the impact in a way that is quantifiable in some manner. And so I think the other avenues that Jeff just mentioned, the affordable housing, and I mean, I think even of our climate action grants and our social justice and racial equity grants, I think the city has shown through those programs collectively that we have a policy understanding that we want to support this kind of investment in our community and this kind of work. Personally, I very much appreciate what V said of having a fair and transparent process. And I think, you know, when we look at what the council, the council's role in this is delegating the authority to HCDC to grant these funds in a relatively unrestricted way. And so if we're just talking about what is the size of that pot and what's appropriate to reset it at, again, I'm just kind of looking for consensus on, do we think that that number really was too low and resetting it to the right point? Is it 625? Is it 675? Personally, I'm in favor of, you know, some increase over history as long as the council uses that process and really does give the authority to HCDC to make those decisions. We've seen ourselves kind of bend over backwards in, you know, a smaller, specific request. And so that's kind of where I'm coming from.
I guess where, and I appreciate that comment, Laura, because that helps with what I was going to ask. Number one, I'm going to come back to your point in just a minute, but if I could first, I'm interested in asking the coalition, what kinds of requests and/or what kinds of money have you received from other municipalities?
Can we have the county in there as well?
I'm serious about this, folks. Coralville and North Liberty are each close to 20,000 in population. So when you put them together, they are about 50% of the population of Iowa City. And there comes a point that it is not fair, I know you're all going to say, oh, she doesn't want to spend the money. No, that's not it. It's also about fairness. If they're 50% of the population of this metro area, they should be contributing a significant amount of money. And so if they're not even coming close to what Iowa City is giving proportionately, I think we've got to have some real serious conversation about how we move forward on this instead of Iowa City always being asked to pick it up.
Becky Reedus, I'm the Executive Director of Community. I think I can answer this a little bit differently than some of my counterpart agencies in that there are food pantries that exist in Coralville and North Liberty. So Coralville and North Liberty do fund both of those food pantries. We do not seek funding for food pantries from Coralville or North Liberty. However, we have a basic needs program, and in that, generally about two-thirds, maybe a bit more, of the individuals that receive assistance through our basic needs programs are Iowa City residents. So I take a look at a total program when I'm presenting for funding for multiple entities, and I take a look at the total number of recipients, and I break it down very specifically by residency, and that forms the basis for our funding request. You might, Iowa City might get a request out of 100, if I'm going for $100,000, I might ask $70,000 of Iowa City, for instance. I might ask $15,000 from Coralville. I might ask the remainder or close to remainder from North Liberty. There's no guarantee of success in meeting that, but we do apply to all, we go after all. all funding sources. I believe probably most of the nonprofits with me in the audience today would say something similar. So I think our response is a little bit different. So we do go after those requests, but councilman, the, the fact is that the, the larger proportion of our services are provided to Iowa City residents.
I'm Barbara Vinigrade with the Iowa City Free Clinic. I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but over 50%, I think it's 54% of clinic users are Iowa City residents. And we also request funding from Coralville. We, about, I believe 13% of our patients are from Coralville and a relatively small percentage are from North Liberty. But we do get funding from all three of those municipalities. I requested funding for North Liberty for the first time in this fiscal year that we're in now, and we did receive some. Coralville funding has increased slightly over the last five years. And I can give you exact figures if you want. They're in the, in our application as well. But if you'd like exact figures, we receive about 5,500 from Coralville, 1,500 from North Liberty, and until this last year, 15,000 from the city of Iowa City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, if you just, and I'm not saying this is the way it is, but if you looked at it purely on a population basis, you'd be looking, I think roughly at two-thirds should come from Iowa City and the other third coming from combined Coralville and North Liberty when you look at an 80 and 40. And so I'm just kind of curious, come ahead Chrissy, I'm just curious. I would also say while Chrissy's coming up, it, it's interesting to me, and it's not the answer, the solution to this is how many people live in Iowa City because we have the services in Iowa City versus they might choose to live in North Liberty or Coralville, but the services they need don't exist there. And so when we look at the number of Iowa City residents that are being served, they're also here because of the services, so.
Well, and so much of it is also, how does one prescribe residency? That's different across different systems and becomes obstacles for each of us, given the different funding sources that we're working with. But I'd add, so funding from the other municipalities is a fraction of what the city does provide to shelter house. The county is largely in step with city funding. I don't know, the other part of this is how does that compare with the resources that those entities, those municipal entities have to distribute, right? When we met with Jeff and city staff, we talked, the coalition that is, as far as wanting to make this conversation expand more regionally, we understand that this goes beyond the city of Iowa City. That's not lost on us. And we know that we have an opportunity, or we believe that we have an opportunity with your leadership to inform that conversation in a different way and to inspire some more bold behavior, frankly. The city of Iowa City is the one community that has a consolidated plan. It is an entitlement community. Each of these organizations plays a vital role in executing and ensuring that that consolidated plan, that strategic plan for addressing the needs of individuals who are lower to modest income, to be able to not just survive, but thrive in our community. We play a vital role in that. We don't have that same kind of tool and vehicle to work out of with those other communities, but given an opportunity, we can certainly make those arguments. It's just that they don't subscribe to the same kind of planning either, so just add.
I appreciate, I appreciate everybody's comments. To get back to your point Laura, I'm, what I would like to see us do in regard to this is one, I think this decision needs to be made in the context of the entire budget. And so I think while we all may have ideas in terms of we want to see the full funding, we want to see some increase, but maybe not the full funding or whatever. And I don't care what people have to say tonight from the standpoint of presenting those positions, but I think a formal, a formal decision kind of related to that should occur probably at our next meeting when we would probably have the, the opportunity to talk about the budget because we need to look at where this money would come from. You know, are we comfortable taking more money out of reserves? Do we, you know, what could it do to our tax levy, et cetera? So I think, I think it does need to be decided in the context of the overall budget.
I guess want to say something here. You know, no doubt this organization are providing really essential, critical service to ours, you know, resident in Iowa City. As Vee said, as Vee said, you said that we need to look at this not as like charity. I think the same thing. I really think that our contribution to those kind of organizations should not have to be, we don't have, we have to stop looking at it as a charity. We should look at it as just, we need to look at those, you know, those organizations as a vendor who are providing service to our residents of Iowa City. Just think about it, if this organization are not there, like I'm going to give like few example, I know there is awesome, a lot of organization, but what come in my mind right now, like the, the crisis center for the food and the shelter house and the free clinic, if we don't have those organizations there, that means we're going to have a lot of residents in this community who are staying without the basic need such as food, shelter, and, you know, the healthcare or like clinic, go just, it's a right to go to the clinic. Yes, I, I would like the people to think about it as the same thing. Our cities cannot operate without water, without like infrastructure, without road, same thing. Our city also cannot really operate without our resident having access to food and shelter and healthcare. We really need to find our, we really need to fund our social service agency at the same amount last year we increased it to, or the request that you guys have, which is 675, I think. And I don't think, if we look at this increase and this spending comparing to the city budget is not that huge. It is really like small amount. When I see there is many, like we invest thousands and millions of dollars in some another project of the city. And I think this especially this project is really, really an awesome project which help our vulnerable people in the community who are really in, they need a basic need. Like this is not like, some is not like for fun. They are not doing like some service that people are not needing. They doing critical services, which is basic need. I think, you know, if we can just increase this like amount and make it like, like this every year, keep it the same amount, because when I look at the Iowa project research and they saying that the fund has been decreased to 17%, that's a research saying that, that's like a number who is real. And I think if we, since 2000, if we was increasing it since 2010 by certain amount every year, today we will reach the same amount, which is 600 something. I really support that. We just increase amount that, you know, HCDC requested and I support the full fund.
Thank you.
I really appreciate the form that your presentation took. I appreciate enormously that the Agency Impact Coalition has taken the time to come together, to work through this whole process and to come up with a proposal that, that demonstrates that these are a number of agencies that are not only serving our people, but that are working together to provide this continuum of care, as you described it. The other piece that I appreciate is that you're in looking forward, not just talking about the, the base funding that you're looking for right now, but you're also looking to other stable, permanent means of funding going forward. So sort of creating, creating community in that way as well. There are a couple of numbers that struck me. One was the, in real terms, 17% decrease in funding. The other one that someone mentioned earlier was also the, the increase in population of 11% over, over a more limited number of years. When you put those together, those are substantial numbers. The, it's basically from my perspective, it's Maslow's, Maslow's law. If you don't have the basics in life, you can't really focus on anything else. You can't focus on learning, you can't focus on a job, you can't focus on, on moving forward in your life. So I am interested in looking at it in, in, in the context of the overall budget picture. I think it's important that we do that and make sure that as we, as we look at our budget as the city, that it's part of, that it's, that we look at it holistically. I'm also interested in, in looking at it in larger context of what other cities are doing and what the county is doing so that as, as much as we're doing with the, with the, the new.
Access.
The access, thank you, the access center, that this is something that not only maybe agencies can, can, can approach jointly, but perhaps governmental agencies can, can approach jointly. So basically, I, the need is there, these, you are contributing to the community and I think this should be part of our overall budget discussion.
I also agree, we should include it in our overall budget discussion just to see the numbers. I, I do very much appreciate the, I didn't even know the Agency Impact Coalition existed and I appreciate their information and all the data, as Laura mentioned about data-driven information. I think our nation and our country people have, have become so data-dependent. They like to see the numbers and the data, the real grit behind what they're trying to make decisions on. People do that in their everyday lives and their own budgets in their homes and, and look at data and what they're using for energy, et cetera. So I do appreciate your report. And I, I also appreciate the, the HCDC because we have appointed these people to this commission to do exactly that, to, to look at these agencies and to divvy out the funds as they see needed. And they've seen over the years, obviously, an increasing need and, and as the data was shown by the impacts presentation, there is a need out there, but there were some other options mentioned. Vee, you'd mentioned the lost and we as a group have talked about that many times. We, we of course, kind of had blinders on and we're thinking of, for road use, because Cedar Rapids uses their lost, most of their lost funding for road use. But, but this is obviously a big community need here and, and I, I just really appreciate the comment. I don't remember who said that, that these agencies are, these plans, it's for individuals not to just survive, but to thrive. And I think, and as everyone has alluded to, we want the members in our community to thrive, no matter what their income level is or who they are. So I think that that is something and that would go along with our budget, more of our budget decision rather than just saying flat out now, this is how much we want to, want to do.
I guess for me, I, what I hear is definitely that we're going to have continued discussion about this. Councilors, we do have two more meetings before we have to actually finalize the budget. So the fourth and the 18th is when we will have the, the finalization, I guess, for scheduled council meetings because of some of the things that we have to get for state documents and that type of stuff and public hearing obligations. So just as a point of reminder, as I think about this, I actually am happy that Jeff may comment because he talked about the global of what we've done here within our community. And so when I hear about the winter shelter, the access center, the 1108 building? 1105 building, I know it's something. The affordable housing, that, it really, really makes me happy that our community actually has done a lot. When I think of a human rights city, these are the elements as Counselor Weiner talked about, you know, Maslow hierarchy. And so I'm very happy to hear all the things that we have done. What I do know is that for the aid to agencies, I would have to agree with, with Vee, it is a little different. This is where we're talking about the, the impact for the services, for them to be activated. There's a employment element to a lot of this. You know, fundings are very different. I'm not going to even try to compare federal funding matches, other community matches. What I do know is that within our community, we pride ourself in ensuring that we take care of everyone within this community. And we're talking about, you know, the basic needs of individuals in, in this continuum of care. I love that model where you all show the continuum of care. It really does touch base on all the needs of those within our community that are less fortunate or really do need help. We all have our personal stories and I won't go into mine, but I can tell you that our agencies do make a difference in our community. So for me, I know we, we're going to wait to the fourth and to the 18th, but you know, I am beyond convinced that we need to increase the funding for our aid to agencies. And so, and so that's where I am. And where we are, I, I do believe as Counselor Berg has talked about, you know, we need to look at this from a policy point of view, you know, how do we, if we're going to do this, how do we make it sustainable? And I believe that we do have to have those conversations as counselors, but I think we do need to also be aggressive in what we're going to do to make sure that the individuals that are on the, they are the ones that are doing the work. We need affordable housing and, you know, all these structures to house people. We need that. But when I think of social workers, everyone within these agencies, I consider them to be social workers. They are navigating the system to make life, things that we, a lot of us just take advantage that we just have. We have, you know, all these opportunities. And so for me, I'm looking forward to the conversation on the fourth and/or the 18th where we further our discussion. So, yeah.
I'm supportive of the, the request for the 675,000. It is interesting, really useful presentation that was made in terms of the, the collective actions, the 500 employees that make up those services. The city of Iowa City has 600 employees roughly, so that's a vast network of services that are being provided by the agencies. And, you know, I think as, as I mentioned earlier, presenting them as a collective, in their collective community impact, I think is really useful and I hope will help with the, the contributions that will be coming from the community. Because I'm concerned that the state and federal levels are fragile as well. So, you know, I do feel your, your impact on the community needs to be understood by the community and that will also help with the funding efforts. But I think it's clear, the city of Iowa City is, has strived to be a leader on these issues. And I would add transportation to all the other things that were mentioned. So equity plays a very big role in Iowa City and I think this is an important piece that needs to be corrected.
Yes.
So would it be, would council be in agreement that maybe we can put this on the February 4th meeting, just to continue some budget items then?
Yeah, I think I have a couple of requests for staff, but I would want to get your all buy-in before I ask for that. One would be to quantify those things that Jeff mentioned of kind of what are all these different mechanisms of support and what are those buckets, right? Because they, they may have different funding sources or they may come out of different funds, but, but what we could characterize and what we could articulate to the community as, you know, promoting those types of services, not just the aid to agencies. But I, I think that would be really helpful if that's something staff thinks they could pull together to, for that global discussion. And then also the, the question of just where HCDC's role is. I'm wondering if, and Vee, maybe I could put you on the spot, if you feel like the commission has kind of the right parameters for the scope of what we're talking about, given that this funding has changed even just that big jump, the one year. Do you feel like you have adequate direction? I think staff was kind of recommending a different direction and so I'm just.
What exactly do you mean in terms of parameters?
Yeah, is the commission's charge from the council and the city appropriate for the scope of really what we're talking about and the types of services that we're helping to fund? to fund?
I mean, I can speak for the commission that we're on right now, the commissioners that I have, and the process that we've been through with the Agency Impact Coalition and other organizations, that I think we've learned a lot. And I feel fairly confident that I am also really for process and transparency. I think that we understand our role in terms of what we need to bring to you, and that some of the changes that we have made have really incorporated a lot of staff comment, which I think has kind of leveled the playing field there. So I feel like we're very comfortable in our role, and now that we have the Agency Impact Coalition and our other organizations, I feel like there's a real clear channel of communication, and also with council. So this has been very illuminating for us and a great learning process. I mean, I don't want to speak for all of us, but I feel like we've kind of gotten to a point where I think we feel comfortable with where we're at.
You don't feel like you're kind of off on your own making recommendations that aren't fitting into the framework of what the commission is supposed to do?
I don't think so. And I think that it also fits into the larger goals of the city. I think that what we do is we try and make sure, and I've had conversations with some of our agencies as well, that, you know, they really want to help fulfill the seven goals. So how can they do that? How can they, you know, incorporate into their services aspects of that? So, like I said, I think that we have a really good working relationship, and I think that the role that we play is, I will say that today, it's way better than when I first stepped in two years ago. I felt like it was blinders. And now I feel like we actually have a process that staff and agencies and the commission have really worked hard to make it feel like, you know, people aren't on the chopping block, we're not making decisions in isolation, and that there's a real fair and inclusive process. So that's kind of how I feel. I think that we're pretty well-charged at this point. And the commission, even beyond the people that are a part of it, I think has a better understanding of its role.
I just want to say something final before you close this. You know, I know that, you know, the city staff already proposed, but yet for us, that would reduce the tax six cent. And I know that most of the council are for the reduction of the tax. Even though it's only six cent, I always think that our resident is not going to feel it. And if I said, "Don't reduce it, make it, like, leave it alone," yes, you know, don't increase it, don't reduce it. But maybe the city manager is going to say, or the finance person, they will tell me the six cent is from the, I guess, the debt service levy. I understand that you cannot use this money to give out, like, another money, but we are using, like, from the general fund, some money to do some kind of project. Instead, we can just bond for that, make it for the debt service levy, and use this money, and don't reduce tax, don't increase tax, leave it alone. Yes, as it is, our resident is not going to feel that. Anyway, you just take this with you, and when we come back during the budget, maybe we can think about this. So we are not going to interrupt the budget of the city. If there's going to be interruption, if you cannot find something else. I just propose that to the council.
If I could add one thing, is that the other piece that I found, that I think gives a fair amount of structure and certainty now, is folding the existing agencies into the city steps process, and having this five-year window so that there's a certain amount of certainty, and agencies can know what to expect, certainly for a two-year period, but probably further on. So that, to me, is an important part of the process, and I do believe that whatever level we end up at, that process and then sticking to those goals and those budget levels will be important going forward.
I know Counselor Burgess had made a recommendation, but need other council support to request that Jeff do some quantifying of kind of the global thing, so...
I think we've gotten that before, and I'm sure he can update if there's any need to update.
So, yep. All right. I just wanted to make sure we have that support. So, thank you.
I think V had one last question.
Sorry, I just wanted to ask, for the local option sales tax, when we're thinking long-term, is there some way we can start that conversation, or is there something that you would need from HCDC? Or, you know, like, I know it's kind of a large conversation, but just trying to think small baby steps. You know, what would that process look like? Or how could we work with staff or, you know, Agency Impact Coalition? Just trying to get a feel for that, if that's possible.
Yeah, what I would say that, V, is I think we're going to be discussing that probably in quite a bit of detail here shortly, in terms of some of the other planning for the city, in terms of stability for the budget, as you talked about. You know, you may realize that we're one of, we're the only metropolitan area in the state that doesn't have it. I think one of the, some of the discussion that we will have to have at that point is, what does the actual ordinance language look like in terms of how much do we tie our hands in terms of where that money goes? We've looked at what various cities have done, and what gives you the best chance of getting that percentage that you need at the ballot. And so, what I think we have to do is, in talking with staff, in the council discussion, talking with communities, the community and agencies, et cetera, that all have their various interests, is trying to make a final decision that gives us the best opportunity to make sure it gets passed.
Sure.
Which might mean that it doesn't include it being all sliced and diced the way some people would want. Because what we've seen happen with some communities is you slice it and dice it too much, and you get somebody that says, "I don't like that 5%, so I'm going to vote against it. I don't like that 10%, so I'm going to vote against it." So it's that balance of having some structure to it, but having it fluid enough so that we can get the votes. So we'll have that discussion certainly going forward.
I would just like to propose, in my conversations with the Agency Impact Coalition, I feel like they really see potential in partnering in terms of, you know, the services that they provide, Iowa City, are very robust and community-invested. So even when you're thinking about, you know, I know a lot of lost, it can be like, oh, well, we're doing parks and rec, and so the community sees, oh, we have better parks. When you're thinking about, you know, the agencies and what they provide, they could really be great partners in saying, "This is what we provide," and so it's sort of a win-win. I just know there's been a lot of conversation about the benefit of having our agencies, and how some sort of, like, you know, awareness campaign or local option sales could be helpful in that. So just to kind of add that to your conversation.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much. I want to thank all the commissioners for coming out today and being a part of the conversation, and also for the Agency Impact Coalition, for also coming out today. Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
While they are transitioning off, I did at least want to just make mention of some of the miles talked about. So, as far as, like, our ability to change the tax rate, that has to be set by January 28th, which is before the next council meeting. So I just wanted to at least make that notation so that it is aware.
Mayors, we're getting settled. Can I chime in real quick on
Please do.
the funding mechanism? At your next council meeting, you need to set the public hearing on your maximum tax rate. So that's part of the new legislation that was passed last year. This is a new step. Therefore, we have to publish that maximum tax rate for your next meeting.
Before?
It will have to be done before.
It has to be, because we're setting the public hearing. So when you set the public hearing, you have to put it out, put that tax rate out there, and that's the maximum. So you cannot go up. So if the council has an interest in raising the tax rate to fund an increase, we need to know that tonight. My suggestion, and of course, we had talked about this scenario coming into the meeting, is that we would not suggest that you use the tax rate to fund an increase. We do budget a surplus. This fiscal year budget that you have proposes a $70,000 surplus, but we are also over slightly our target reserve level. So our maximum target general fund reserve is 35%, and we're about 36% now. So for a funding increase of the scale that you're talking about, what we would suggest is we use that surplus, and then we use some one-time funds to bridge the gap this year. And then we incorporate that as a goal going into the fiscal year '22 budget, so that we can maintain that level and not see a drop. And again, if you're willing to set that priority for your fiscal year '22 budget right now, I don't see any problem in using the one-time funds that we have to bridge that gap. And that way, you're not getting into tax rate discussions.
Okay. You mean you think you have a ways, as you mentioned, all those kinds of opportunity for this year?
Yes.
And also, you have a way to do it next year, hopefully?
Hopefully, yes. I mean, that becomes a top priority, because you don't want this to be a pendulum, where, you know, one year it's up and one year it's down.
Okay.
So that's a priority. And you'll, as you know, you'll have a number of priorities going into next budget. We'll just have to really make that commitment here to bridge that gap. But we're talking, depending on where you land, 100,000 or so.
I believe if you can figure it out, you know, we don't need to do anything. That's my personal, you know, really, if you can figure it out, then we don't need to change tax, or we don't have to go through those kinds of things, you know?
So I think the option is allow staff to work within the current tax levy rate, sorry, tax rate that we've established. If you want to give yourself that other option, we can publish a higher tax rate
No.
and then scale it back. But I think that's going to cause a lot of confusion and angst in the community.
I'd rather stay where we are.
Yeah. Stay the same thing if you can figure it out. We don't have to do anything.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Great. Well, on the 4th of February, we'll have it on the agenda to have more discussion.
Okay.
All right. So we're going to move on to, we're going to be having a University of Iowa Student Government joint meeting with council, and that's going to be February 11th. And today, we want to talk about what topics we might want to discuss with the UISG.
Yeah, so I guess, thanks. Good to be back with you all, and welcome new council members. So, yeah, so I guess, just to preface the conversation here, Austin and I really want the conversation, is that two weeks from now, two weeks from now, to be productive. And so, we really want to pick, you know, specific agenda items that are going to, you know, progress the conversation and make it productive overall. So I sent you all an email before I went off to break, so you should have had time to look over the results of the survey. But there was considerable attention on affordable housing, as always. Also, carbon output, looking at climate action steps, and also physical safety of students was something that I was surprised by, as far as, you know, interested in talking about that with you all. But, yeah, I know graduate and undergraduate student government members are very excited to have your undivided attention at this joint meeting. And so, yeah, I just wanted to get some input from you all as to other items that you'd like to add to the agenda.
I think the ones that the students want are the most important ones.
Sure.
I don't know if others have...
Well, I certainly agree with, you know, the three top priorities should be discussed. I would add, perhaps, you know, are there special areas geographically in Iowa City that are of concern to you, for whatever reason that they might be a concern? So, I mean, the three we're talking about, I mean, physical safety might be an example of that, actually, where specifically, what are we talking about? I mean, I think it's possible to take any one of those three and try to be more specific about what it is the concern is.
Right, yeah. And I guess that's kind of what I wanted to get from all of you, is looking at those, you know, those common, those themes as, you know, big umbrellas. And just, you know, just to have that on the agenda, items from you, like, things to talk about, I don't know, things that you guys have been working on in the city, you know, on that side of things, just to kind of start the conversation there. And obviously, at the joint meeting, I mean, it's just going to be, you know, a big old conversation, so nothing's going to be voted on, very casual, laid-back, just an opportunity to have some open conversation. So just like something to kind of get the conversation moving. If there are any, you know, specific things you wanted to make sure to talk about that address these issues?
I was thinking that one item that wasn't listed, but kind of goes along with all of those, is the parking issue. That's a big issue, and I know it's a concern of students and residents also in the city. But I know students especially, probably, they come in with a car, and they don't know what to do with it then. So we might have some discussion on that, their thoughts, and what they think the city might be able to do to help them with that.
Yeah, definitely.
As a point of reference, like, for the physical safety of students, I wonder if, I mean, we may be able to kind of comment on that, but I wonder if maybe we wouldn't have someone from the police department, because I know we have the downtown officer, Andy, that might be able to...
Yeah, we'll, just taking notes here, we'll have kind of our subject matter staff experts present that night.
Sure.
So, police, it sounds like climate action, NDS, unaffordable housing. We'll have folks there to help you out.
Awesome. One thing that I would love to hear about, and I don't know what the counselors think, is we hear that the students kind of stay downtown, and we would love to find out what are some of those barriers for getting them in other parts of the community. So at least, me personally, I would love to know, what would it take to get them, you know, to other parts of the community?
One thing that has come up in some recent conversations with students that I've had, some of them were door-knocking, or various presidential candidates. And I was surprised at how articulate they were on the question of affordable housing. So one of the ways that conversation could be framed would be housing preference. You know, I heard some preferences from students in terms of what type of housing they would be interested in, including options such as co-living, for lack of a better word, you know, where you have shared common spaces, but, which can include kitchens, for example. That ties into the affordability issue. So what, beyond the sort of housing types that we see, what are some thoughts of the students, as well as within the conventional framework that we often deal with, you know, of buildings up to three stories, perhaps up to six stories, and then are high-rises? How do students feel about those options?
And as far as the structure of the meeting, what is the length of time for the meeting itself?
Yes. So the UISG, you know, normal meetings usually go from 7:00 to 9:00. You know, that's a cap at 9:00, and then there's committee time after that. So definitely no longer than two hours. I'm not sure, you know, if it would get to that length. But, yeah, we would just have, you know, kind of introductions and go through an agenda. Austin and I are going to draft up an agenda, and then we can send it off to you just to, you know, see a draft of the final agenda. And if there's anything that you all would like to change, we can address that at the next city council meeting. And, yeah, just, yeah, I mean, I'll send you a final agenda, so you can kind of see how the process will go. But, yeah, definitely not over two hours for that.
Okay. It would be helpful for our counselors to know how much time we'll have, so we can govern ourselves accordingly.
I think as far as, sorry, just subject matter, a lot of the themes I was seeing, well, obviously, the waste management was a high one of the second and third priorities. And it looked like from the individual comments, specifically recycling and compost. So, Jeff, I think if we can have some information, I think it's a great opportunity just to share, you know, what's available, what we're already doing, directions we can go, in addressing some of those concerns. I just want to make sure that one's on the list for having some information available.
Great. Any other thoughts on this topic?
No, I mean, I think that sounds good. As far as public safety, or, you know, physical safety, I know that, you know, this was more in the renters' guide comments, but we saw a lot of concern about, you know, snow removal and ice and things like that, especially for students who are maybe living farther off campus, or even at the apartment complexes. And so, maybe also touching on that topic might be a good idea. But no, other than that, yeah, I think that's great. And, yeah, Austin and I will get back to you, send you a draft of the final agenda. And, yeah, we look forward to having, hosting you all at the Iowa Memorial Union coming up here. So, thank you.
We're looking forward to it. Thank you. Yes. All right, moving right along. Clarification of agenda items.
I've got one, it's not so much a clarification, but just kind of let people know, when we get to item number 12, repealing the moratorium...
get to item number 12, repealing the moratorium, given that the delay in this was council-instigated, I am going to propose that we consolidate the second and third readings and get this done tonight.
That's kind of redo that during the...
We can do it. It will require a supermajority. And so, I just want to see a nod of heads of...
I don't think we need to do a nod of heads now, do we? I mean, I...
I mean, we can certainly, if you want to...
I mean, I can make the motion, and somebody can second it, and then if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay.
Sure.
Sounds good to me.
I don't think that'll be a problem.
Any other agenda item?
Kind of a light agenda, which is nice.
Yes.
Yes. For the second time, Laura.
Yeah, we have new counselors. It was done just for them.
Yes.
We're going to ease you into it.
Yeah, exactly.
It had nothing to do with me. No.
Welcome.
Yes. All right. If there's nothing else on agenda items, we'll move it, move forward to Info Packet, January 9th.
Mm-hmm.
We'll move on. Am I moving too quick?
No.
Move on to Info Packet, January 16th.
I'm okay with the summer meeting schedule, IP-8. I don't know if we...
I don't have to hide me.
Let me...
I thought I looked through everything, but that one...
Yes. I told you, we need that phone. I don't have to ask your channel anymore.
So, our counselor is able to see?
Yeah. That looks fine to me.
Okay. So, for the council members who haven't gone through this, occasionally, we'll change our meeting schedule in the summer, cancel a meeting based on vacations or something. But what I'm suggesting here is that we go to an every-three-week schedule as opposed to every-two-week. And just realize, for those of you that will be around, if something urgent comes up and we need to get a vote on a specific item, oftentimes to approve a project or what, that has a time-sensitive issue with it, we'll call a special meeting. Usually lasts five or 10 minutes, but we'll get the vote and we'll move on.
Okay. Okay, that works for people, seems like. Any other item from Info Packet, January 16th? All right. I think we'll move on to council updates on assignment boards, commissions, and committees. And not to put Pauline on the spot, hopefully in the future, I'll kind of give people fair warning. But we're going to be just kind of rotating this way. So, we started with Maz the last time, and so today, we'll start with Pauline.
Well, I don't have any report on really any of my assigned committees. All of us, I think almost all of us, were at the joint entities meeting. So, we all kind of know what we discussed at that. It was a pretty short and sweet agenda, as usual. So, I really have nothing else as far as assigned boards or commissions.
The boards to which I'm assigned have not yet met, at least with me on them.
I attended a ICAD board meeting on January 10th, and I think you all are probably aware that Mark Nolte is moving on. And so, the board will be undertaking a search for a new executive director. And there was a very nice farewell to him on the 17th also.
Which most of us missed because of the weather.
I was very grateful to be downtown at that time and just be able to shuffle over. And then I attended a UNESCO City of Literature meeting on the 14th, and we're undertaking some strategic planning.
No, no meetings have been held?
I haven't had any. We have JEC meeting this Friday, so...
All right. So, the only thing that I've had outside, well, I had the assessors' meeting. And that was, as, we just kind of went through that today. And then today, earlier today, I did the Partnership for Alcohol Safety, had a meeting there. Other than that, that was really kind of an introduction meeting, giving me a little history about how the partnership kind of started and kind of where we plan to go here in the future. So, outside of that, no other committees for me.
You don't have any?
All right. Great. Well, if there's nothing else for now, we will be adjourned into our 7:00 PM formal meeting.